Probably everybody right there, but no, they they're fine.
We will do that, yes.
So who wants to be the pro Tim trader? Sheila. Sheila was last time.
I can get it.
They need a pressure.
All right, Melinda said she'd do it. All right, I have four thirty. But I will call the Evansville Van Gogh Public Library four thirty May eleventh meeting to order. First in thing is introduction and form of visitors, but I don't believe we have anybody that wants to speak today. Nobody's signed up. So we'll move to correspondence and I have a over here some correspondence. I'm going to flip through real quick, then I'll pass it on for everybody to look through. So it exists. Next item is the consent agenda. Took me included in your package. I would entertain a motion for approval. There's a motion.
Second.
A second. Discussion, questions. Hearing none. All those in favor of passing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Governance. Is that right?
Yep.
Governance, um, looks like Heather's got this one with role descriptions. And I had noted when I started to print my package, that's what stopped me.
That was probably smart, yes.
Going to read that one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it killed the printer again.
Or a couple of trees.
So as we've talked about for many months, months, in order to properly prepare for our salary survey, we first began with our role descriptions and updating and examining all the current role descriptions and specifically working to make sure that we had correct roles, titles, and updating qualifications. With the assistance of Red Envelope Consulting, a new role description template was created and all the roles have been updated with some title changes where appropriate. Um, they were all included on board book, but not in your printed packets because there are close to fifty of them, yes.
So, so with that role descriptions, um, I don't think anybody's had a chance to take a look at those, obviously. So is that like the order of business between now and sometime in the next future that we go through all those and look at them? And is there a way to to glean out of those significant changes or newness versus olden?
So the hope was that people did look at them prior, um, so that we could go ahead and do them immediately, but we don't have to. We could put that off.
I'm not going to speak for the group. I don't know to what degree everybody's had a chance to review. You didn't feel thermal? Because I didn't make it through all of them, so.
The essential, the biggest point is the the template, the change in the template itself. Um, taking away some, what we would can easily say now were some vagaries in language in our previous role description. This is a much more straightforward, uh, traditional format of a role description. And the, uh, big change also was having basic and preferred qualifications rather than just one standard set of qualifications for each role. Uh, as noted, there were some title changes. Most of them were minor or making them more understandable. So instead of the the title of facilitator, which no one quite understands what that means, now they are assistant librarians. So certified, but don't have their MLS. Makes a lot more sense on what their path is to career in librarianship. Things like that were really the basic changes. Um, there were a few changes to pay grades, which of course is actually part of the salary survey and not really the role description themselves.
I thought that they were well done. Uh, and and it brought about for me a lot more clarification on who it was, what the role was. So I appreciate that.
They did also, we, we worked really hard, uh, to make sure there was cohesion in them and that they all kind of said the same thing. So the bullet points, when you get into essential duties and responsibilities at the leadership team, there are exact bullet points for, so that we all have the same roles and responsibilities as part of a leadership team. Uh, assistants all have the words, um, accent instead of. So again, just some cohesion across all the role descriptions so that they all look and feel the same, which we did not have in previous role descriptions.
Asking this, if we do, uh, and I anticipate maybe we would go ahead and vote these in it as we would make our way through these, uh, and have questions, uh, or even concerns, uh, I assume that, uh, that maybe even legal counsel has reviewed these. Do we, did we reach out to legal counsel to review them? Uh, actually, that's not the question. The question is if we do have questions or concerns after voting on these, we can bring them to you.
Yes, yeah, at any time. You can always bring your questions to us. Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
And we did take all of these before, um, the full leadership team from the location managers so they could see it as well as, um, the original administrative team as well. So we've had everyone look at these.
Okay.
Do we want to entertain a motion to accept the, um, title change recommendations as well as the new job descriptions?
There's a motion.
Yours, I can imagine.
I'm making a motion, yeah.
I'll second that.
There's a second. Is there any discussion?
I
Go ahead.
I just had a couple of comments. I really do appreciate and I like the, um, the two pager, the title change recommendations as well as outlining departments more clearly. Um, I'll be honest, for me, that's always been a little vague. And having that on, you know, a simple, easy to follow document. It also, as a patron, speaking as a patron, not necessarily a board member, I think for our patrons, it's much clearer what people are supposed to be doing in their work and who to ask for what. Um, so I really did appreciate the change in titles and, um, just the clarity in departments and kind of who answers to who.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Any other discussion?
I do have a question, but it should have come during the consent. Uh, I missed my opportunity under the, uh, uh, personnel matters. It was the safety director, uh, the process on that. Yeah, I saw that that still wasn't billed.
So, yeah, we're in, uh, we're having our second round, not next week, the week after.
Okay.
Did our first round with several candidates, um, had some really great ones, and I think we're bringing six.
Six back.
Six back for second round.
Very candidates.
Must be a tough field. Good deal. That's good to have that.
All right, any other? The only thing I would add along the same lines is, and I don't, I don't want to 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 say anything disparaging against the former set of job descriptions, but they were very difficult to read and understand.
I agree, yes.
And it has always been a sticking point. And so to have a standard format, look and feel, and again, I have not made it through all of them. But to Melinda's point, they were much easier to read.
And that was
Much easier to to figure out who's on first and what's on second.
Yeah, you can tell what was done in-house previously versus what now has been taken outside and done.
This, this looks like most of them that I've seen.
Correct, yes.
The ones before were kind of different.
Yeah, yep.
Yes, thank you.
So, uh, is, is this brought to the board because of the major overhaul or is any change?
As a new role description always comes to the board.
The new role description?
Yeah.
So changes to these are just periodic updates to maybe hours or other duties. Those don't necessarily come to the board.
If we change a role description, they come to the board.
Okay.
Just doesn't happen that very often.
Right, and hopefully not for quite some time.
Especially to say I really look good.
Yeah.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor to accept those, uh, titles and descriptions as presented in the packet. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Salary survey presentation.
Okay, so we have Abby and Patrick on our Zoom call. Look, they're, they're going to pop in. Um, they are actually going to do this presentation and then the next piece. This is actually just an informative piece. There's no action on this piece. They're just presenting how we got to the next piece.
Let's see. Good afternoon. Is everyone able to hear me okay?
No.
We're going to turn it up. Hold on just a second, Abby.
No worries.
Okay, try it again, Abby.
Good afternoon. Are you able to hear me okay?
Perfect.
Wonderful. And just checking, is everyone able to see the PowerPoint presentation I have pulled up as well? Wonderful. Okay, well, thank you for the time this afternoon. Um, as Heather and Lisa have mentioned, we have had the great pleasure uh, of working with some of your leadership team over the last several months. Um, NFP is the organization that we work with and we kind of took over after Red Envelope helped support all of those job description updates that you guys just got done reviewing and discussing. So in today's presentation, I just want to review the overall steps of a compensation study that we targeted to accomplish as part of this project. Um, we have a few takeaways and recommendations as well, um, but that's kind of the goal of the of the presentation today. Getting us started, uh, for any of our clients, we really have a five, uh, key project step approach. So first and foremost, uh, it's important that we gather, uh, data and information specific to our clients to make sure we fully understand um, kind of the the concepts of the roles internally, uh, before we can go about a benchmarking process, which is what's highlighted there in step two. So benchmarking, uh, actually, uh, is the, the work that we would do by taking a look at your roles internally, how they're defined, key responsibilities and skillset. And we compare those out to the general marketplace using a variety of salary survey sources. We then take that raw data that we've collected, um, trying to understand your internal goals for your compensation program and philosophy and turn those into a more usable salary structure. So salary structures are typically composed of pay ranges that consist of minimums, midpoints and maximums. So it's a little bit more typical of what you would expect to see on a position level. It's important to note here that steps one through three are solely focused on the role itself. So we first have to fully understand how the position should be impacted. But the people part of the equation is equally as important, and that's what we look to review in step four. So step four is that comparison of current employees within the organization and how they would compare against that new salary structure. And then although it's step five here for implementation and communication, those are really very important things for us to keep in mind from the beginning to the end of the project. Um, and one of those outcomes is the presentation today as well. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention my point down here at the bottom, so that highlighted box. Sometimes when employees or staff hear that their organization is going through a compensation study, they think, great, I can't wait to get my raise at the end of it. But the reality is we're trying to assess market competitiveness, market competitiveness and your internal equity. Um, and it may be the case that you are already paying competitively for certain positions. So if that's the case, we wouldn't have a strong, uh, recommendation at the end for an increase or a pay adjustment. So just because we engage in these types of projects does not mean the end result is going to be, uh, an increase for all employees involved. So taking a little bit of a deeper dive into those five steps. Step one here, again, data gathering and sharing. So this slide just mentions that for the majority of our clients, um, we actually first need to identify which roles and positions that we should be benchmarking against the marketplace. There's a couple of reasons why we may not want to benchmark one hundred percent of roles in an organization. Um, some of those reasons, if you have internal job leveling, um, for example, maybe you have a file clerk one and a file clerk two. It's not always advantageous for us to pull in salary information for both of those levels. By pulling in file clerk one, um, salary survey information, we could then easily understand that that level two should be a a step above that level one. There are also some situations where you have, may have a very unique, um, or niche type of roller position internally, and that may not benchmark well against the general marketplace if it's very job or role or industry specific. Last slide here for step one for data gathering. So we needed to collect a few different pieces of information throughout the study. Um, probably first and foremost, those role descriptions that had just recently been revised by, uh, the support of Red Envelope Consulting. Um, very essential for us to understand the scope of work involved for each position. Also wanting to review things like organizational charts, so we can see reporting structure and hierarchy. We did take a look at FLSA classifications and recommendations as well, based on those new role descriptions. And then, of course, that employee census data, so comparing current staff to what we've established as a new structure. Now that we have all those materials in front of us, we were able to move into that benchmark work, which again is the comparison out to the marketplace. Our practice really holds, um, a a strong foundation in our belief that there is no one right answer. There is no one magic source out there for salary information. So we really take the approach of using as multiple surveys as possible to give us reliable valid data. For this project, we used three primary sources. You'll see those listed, those logos down at the bottom. So comp analyst, comp data, and then the Economic Research Institute or ERI, um, as it's more commonly known. And these have been long established, long in the compensation and total rewards rewards field. Um, very well renowned, uh, salary sources. So those were what we use as our primary, um, for the the benchmarking work for this project. What you'll see on this slide is previously we discussed determining what sources to use for the project. Now we really needed to define what cuts of data, what sort of comparables should we be looking at within these sources? The example I give almost all of my clients, um, is we're not trying to make you guys competitive with the Amazons and the Googles of the world, right? We want to make sure that we're taking into account things like industry, your geographic location and size indicators to make sure you're competitive with the local market. When it comes to industry, uh, we really determined kind of four main areas. Um, so education, government entities, libraries, and then a little bit more general than nonprofit or nonprofit services sector. For geography, you guys are in a little bit of a unique space. So we wanted to make sure we were pulling in Evansville, uh, specifically where available, probably one of your next largest metro areas, the the Louisville area. And then also pulling in data related to the Midwest region as a whole, just to make sure we were able to see how each of those geographic pieces um, were reflected in our overall salary results. The next two indicators on the right are again those size related indicators. So we were looking at a revenue, uh, or operating budget, uh, around the fifteen million dollar mark and full-time equivalents. Um, so that FTE, it's similar to headcount, but a little bit different, uh, and that we were focused on around one fifty-nine. And a question we get all of the time, these studies are great, but there's a lot of things going on in the market right now, right? There's a lot of things in terms of inflation. How accurate or updated is this data? It's a great question, so we make sure to address that with our clients upfront. So the effective date for the data used for this study, we established was one-one of twenty twenty-three, so the start of this calendar year. So we would say our data and results, our impacts of this study are going to be reflective as of that date, so January first. My next slide here hits back to the importance of those updated job responsibilities and job descriptions. So again, our practice is to make sure we fully understand the scope of work that each position is responsible for. We do not go out to the marketplace, um, and these surveys match based on title alone because title can vary greatly from one organization to the next. So we really focus on key responsibilities, skills, experience, education, et cetera, to make sure that we find appropriate matches. This is such an important piece of the project. We also work in a little bit more of a continuous feedback loop. So again, we worked with, uh, the COO and HR manager to make sure that they felt comfortable and confident in the matches that we pulled, that they were representative of your roles internally. My next slide here takes us back to some high school algebra. I'm not going to spend too much time on the math lesson today, but just wanted to relate back what information we pulled from these surveys. So we pull percentile or median focused data rather than averages. The biggest reason for that is there can sometimes be outliers within a data source, and we really want to mitigate the amount of impact that those outliers can have on our final results. So in the example we have here, um, the median result of our salary information listed over on the left would be this fifty-two thousand, six oh seven. Versus if we had pulled in that average figure, it would be about two grand or lower because we have an outlier with thirty-eight thousand dollar salary result here. So just showing the importance of focusing in on those percentiles rather than averages, again, to mitigate the amount of impact those outliers may have on final results. Okay, my next slide here is, I know this print is small, um, please don't try to squint. I just wanted to present typically how our findings are presented. This is not from your study. This is a, a de-identified just example that we use in these types of presentations. But generally speaking, my top portion of information is going to be related to your specific role. So the title that we're looking at, the effective date of the data, as well as some general excerpts pulled from the job description. In the upper right-hand corner, you will see, uh, two categories of compensation data. So we pull in base, which would be your base standard annualized salary as well as TCC, which stands for total cash compensation. Now, TCC is going to include that annualized base plus short-term cash-based incentives. The most common things included in those are bonuses and commissions. It does not include any other evaluation of benefits. We're really just focused on that compensation piece. And again, we pull in that percentile data for both categories at the twentieth, the fiftieth and the seventy-fifth level. Then down below, where we have that green bar going all the way across the screen, that's the start of one of our survey sources. So in this example, this is comp analyst. And we can see how the different cuts of data relate back varied salary information for us. And then for each of these reports, we would have a total summation, um, from everything up above. So again, this would be repeated down in an Excel file, depending on how many sources we use and how many matches we found. Okay, so at this point in the study, we've gone out to our survey sources. We've vetted these matches, uh, with some of your internal leaders to make sure we're comfortable and confident with those matches. Now we're able to to try to tie in pieces of targeted compensation philosophy and strategy into creating some usable salary structures. Our practice really takes a two-factor approach. So the first factor here, external competitive, external competitiveness. That is what you guys looked for a consultant for, right? So to help you compare to make sure you were competitive against the marketplace. For the structures that we've created as a result of this project, when we look at the primary bulk of staff positions, we were able to target them at the sixty-second and a half percentile of the raw market data. There is a small selection of leadership positions that were targeted at some, um, alternative rates of the twenty-fifth and the fiftieth percentile. And we'll talk about those in in a couple of slides here. Generally speaking, to kind of give you a concept of of what's more standard in the marketplace, so that fiftieth percentile of the market is what's seen as quote-unquote that standard market rate. So about half of organizations participating in those surveys would be above that rate of pay and about half would be below. Um, the second factor to creating these structures is the approach of internal equity. So we really want to make sure that we're evaluating your hierarchy internally to make sure that the placement of positions is appropriate, given that internal structure. A few other pieces to keep in mind on how these structures vary slightly from the raw market data. So again, the first point here, we're able to tie in pieces of targeted pay philosophy um, in terms of how the organization wants to be considered externally competitive. Usually these ranges are more rounded, um, so they, they try to to push everything together so we can establish lateral roles, job families, like positions. Um, so we don't have so much variability in terms of the number of pay ranges within the organization. And then finally, if there were any positions that we did not collect that market data for, we're able to go back to that internal equity process and determine where those positions should properly be placed. Okay, my next slide here is what that final salary structure looks like. So there's a few pieces that I'll call out. Um, first and foremost, just going to work my way from left to right in these columns so that we fully understand what it is we're looking at. So grade, the first column indicated, um, that is, you'll notice it's even nomenclature. So we start at zero to four, work all the way up to grade twenty-four. We typically recommend clients use that even nomenclature, um, because these structures themselves, they should last you several years. You shouldn't have to do these in-depth studies on an annual basis by any means. However, it is likely that you may experience some change in your staffing or your structure within a three to five-year period. Um, so to be able to account for that and allow for flexibility, for example, if you were to determine you needed um, a senior lead custodian level, we'll just use that example here. Um, and you have your lead custodian in four, but you don't feel like that new position should really be placed in six. You'd be able to easily insert a grade five here and determine what those pay rates should be for that minimum midpoint and maximum by determining the midpoint, um, of either end of those ranges. So it just allows for flexibility. My next category for positions, so you will notice for the most part, um, you have multiple positions listed in single grade levels. So grade fourteen here has four positions listed, although we do have a couple instances where just a single role is listed. Typically, we would consider those positions that are shared within a range, um, as lateral. So although their, uh, their scope of work may vary greatly, they may be over different areas of responsibility. When we look across the organization and across the market data, we would say that generally speaking, those positions should be paid within a similar pay range. So they would be considered lateral. The last callouts are the actual salary figures. So it is important to note, we worked first based on salary figures. So a standard forty-hour work week, and then we translated that data into what it would look like on an hourly basis. So that that's why some of these figures don't look quite as well-rounded. They shape out a little bit better for those full-time salaried roles. But we've established a minimum, a midpoint and a maximum for each of these pay ranges. If we refer back a couple of slides ago, I mentioned targeting for most of the staff positions that, that sixty-second and a half percentile data. So what I mean by that is our midpoint that we've established here for all of the gray boxed positions, so from zero to fourteen. The midpoint is what aligns to that sixty-second and a half percentile of the raw market. So that's what we're trying to get um, to that central tendency of the raw data. In my call-out box down here just below, we have two salary grades, so sixteen and eighteen, highlighted in yellow here. They have targeted the fiftieth percentile. So taking a look at results overall, we felt like maintaining that sixty-second and a half through the top level of leadership was too aggressive. Um, so we wanted to be able to pull that back a little bit. Um, so that's why they are targeted at the fiftieth, and then the green ranges, so twenty to twenty-four. Our midpoint is aligned to the twenty-fifth percentile of the data. I'll leave that up for just a moment more. We have just a few other slides to get through, but I can always recall this if there's any questions.
So, yeah, I just have one, just to make sure I'm perfectly clear on how you establish the midpoint.
Yeah.
When you say sixty-seven and a half percent is the primary midpoint, you're saying in a group of a hundred, you're at sixty-seven point five, twenty-two point five or above, and the rest are below.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, for all of the gray indicated ranges.
So on the, on the leadership group that you targeted at twenty-five, that is the bottom quarter.
Correct. Yep. Okay. So now that we have established what those pay ranges should look like per position, we want to bring into account the individuals that you have currently on staff. Generally speaking, where employees should land in that pay range, um, can vary slightly based on the individual criteria of the employee. So typically speaking, someone closer to targeted towards the minimum value of a pay range is usually newer to the role, to the industry or the organization. Someone established closer to the midpoint of those pay ranges typically demonstrates the skill and experience needed for the job. So we think of these people as being proficient within their role. And then individuals towards the maximum value. So those are typically highly tenured, high performers, key talent. So again, the individual criteria of the employee really needs to be taken into effect, uh, into effect of where they should be within that pay range. So again, the individual criteria of the employee really needs to be taken into effect uh, into effect of where they should be within that pay range. Our practice does have some kind of recommendations in terms of um, administration at a base level. So typically speaking, new hires, they should not be hired below the minimum of your established pay range. Um, you, it could, it can be a compliance issue, a risk issue if you were to bring someone in lower than what you've established as that minimum pay rate. Usually speaking, if you're looking to hire someone new into the role, they are usually placed somewhere between the minimum and the midpoint based on their relative experience and skills. For current employees, strong performers, again, fully functioning in their role usually should be considered um, at or their rate of pay at the midpoint, if not above. Um, we did some current modeling on what this would look like based on tenure uh, within the organization as well as within their current position. Um, trying to reflect that that current employee employee and where they should fall in relation to that midpoint value. For employees who are at or close to approaching the maximum of a pay range, really don't want to continue to accelerate that base rate of pay if they've already exceeded that maximum value. So should consider doing lump sum or one-time stipends in lieu of additional base increases. Again, those employees are already considered paid well and above the market. Um, if it's available for staff, you may want to consider additional promotional or growth opportunities. Um, and again, what that stipend strategy may look like. And then our fifth step in that process, so again, communication implementation. So as an end result, uh, we have created again a recommended compensation philosophy document that kind of highlights the steps of the project we went through, decisions we made along the way, and some of those best practices. A few of our key observations and recommendations moving forward. Um, we do recommend prioritizing bringing as many employees as possible up to the minimum of that salary range over the next few years as budget allows. And I think Lisa and Heather may have a few additional thoughts um, on some of the modeling that we did as well. The second bullet here, again, for current staff, really want to recommend continuing to keep in mind those equity adjustments. So making sure employees are placed appropriate to their individual criteria within their range of pay. And then the last but not least, um, so again, these types of studies shouldn't have to be done on an annual basis. Uh, we're hoping that the structure we've set up sets you up for success for at least the next three to five years. But we do recommend keeping an eye on what's happening with market trends. Um, it may be the case that we need to do some sort of adjustment to the pay range or some sort of general increase, commonly called a COLA adjustment for staff, to make sure that you're not falling behind with the market trend is happening. So think of things like consumer price index inflation, those types of topics. So that's all we had for the slide deck today, but I certainly opened it up to questions or concerns.
I'm assuming that there is an evaluation tool to help determine where people are and whether there is a salary increase or or not in terms of their performance that so that when they are hired and have a specific role, that they are informed as to how they are going to be evaluated and what criteria they will be evaluating.
So when if there is a new hire, there's a thirty, sixteen, ninety evaluation. Right now, currently, the way that we have HR structured, and I say currently because these are all going to change in the future. Um, we've gotten away from annual performance reviews as a review that affects your pay. So in very, oh gosh, I don't even know, at least the ten years that I've been.
We've never, we've, we have never, in my thirty years, have tied raises to evaluations. We've always done it across the board um, as of January the first.
First, unless you're within a, if you're in a disciplinary process,
Right.
then you wouldn't be eligible for your, what used to be a step increase or an overall increase to everyone's pay.
And there's a paper trail that determines if that particular person is on a disciplinary track.
Correct. Yeah, okay. Yep. And when we get into that next piece about where we place people within a range, it is not based on their performance. Okay. Because that gets into individual factors a little bit more than we wanted. Again, staying with that equitable model of how to put people into their salary ranges.
Okay.
Thank you.
So is tenure then the highest consideration as far as moving to that median or maximum pay range?
Correct. Right now, that is where we we started the the pay. Yeah, where we place people in the range, yes. Their tenure in their current role.
In their current role. Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Can NFP look at those numbers and came back to us where we should place?
Yeah.
Based on tenure.
Yeah. Do you have any questions additionally for NFP before we move into our details and specifics? I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abby.
Thank you, Patrick. We appreciate the time this afternoon and everyone have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Have a good evening.
So that was the presentation. So next is the salary structure and implementation proposal.
Correct. This is a long memo. Do you want me to read it word for word? You need me to read it word for word. I'll hit the highlights. So based on the recommendations and the data that they provided through NFP and the gap analysis that we did based on each staff, each staff member's current salary, their years of service in their current role, and based on best practices where they should be placed within their new range, we uh, put together individual. Uh, actually, let's see, I should have just read it. I wrote it well. So the salary survey did confirm that we have a significant portion of our staff that are underpaid and are not at the minimum market rate for salaries within our Midwest region and our Evansville region, honestly. Um, so we put together the new sal, we didn't put it together, NFP put together the salary structure based on that data. That is the first piece for approval is just the salary structure itself. Um, then, once we got into that, like I said, we looked at how long people have been in their current position, not necessarily the the organization as a whole, um, but where they are currently and place them within the salary range for range percentage penetration number. For the most part, um, it did include a pretty uh, decent raise for every staff member. There were thirteen staff members who were found to be being paid at or above the market rate. And because we wanted to be equitable across the board and because we are looking to implement this year and hold then for next year, we are proposing a three-and-a-half percent salary increase to those thirteen staff members. I want to note that nine of those are in the top pay grades in grades twelve or above. Um, so there are not very few, there are very few that the salary survey did not touch uh, when it came down to it. So through the planning efforts that we have had over the past several years, we do have the fiscal resources to implement this in the twenty-twenty-four budget. Once we knew that we could implement the entire, uh, to get everybody where we felt they needed to be in their new salary range in twenty-four, we worked backwards to see if we could implement it for a portion of this year, as we know that people are currently underpaid. Uh, when we did that, we are, do feel confident that we can put this structure in place in July of this year. Um, I want to say in July, meaning technically it would start in June, it would be the first pay of July that it would be, which is thirteen pays for the rest of the year, because there is uh, December, I believe, that has three. Yes. So our recommendation is to approve the new salary structure and the implementation schedule starting uh, that would hit in July of this year.
July fourteenth.
July, there you go, July fourteenth. Thank you.
While you're mulling all that over, I just wanted to acknowledge how hard these guys worked. And at the end, they brought in Lori to run all these numbers and look at the budgets and double-check everything, just so you're aware of that. It was a lot of work working with our consultants um, to get to this point, and they've done an outstanding job of doing that.
I don't know if you heard me, I have motion to approve.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second. Your discussion.
Yes. Um, the next page in our packet that has the salary structure. Can you explain the two columns on the far right, the range spread and midpoint differential?
I wish we still had Abby and Patrick on here for that, honestly. So my understanding, and I'm I'm going to be very clear, my understanding is that we wanted to not create large gaps from where the bottom and to the top is. So midpoint differential, correct.
Got it.
Then, and then the range spread is where your minimum to maximum is. But the midpoint differential is increasing upwards.
Got it.
So you don't see, you know, these large gaps between the the pay grades themselves. That's my very basic summary of that.
Thank you. They use those a lot.
Yeah.
So I've got a question about three-and-a-half percent for the thirteen who were at the maximum. So Abby had said, and and I had read in the presentation that those who are over the maximum of range should receive a lump sum or one-time stipend. But it sounds like you're wanting to put that on the base for next year.
Yes, and the reasoning behind that is that's our usual practice is to give an overarching, like, again, in the past, we've done this step increase, which is two-point-one per six percent for each staff member. Um, we base three-point-five percent based on our conversations with Abby and Patrick about what they see is trending and what they're recommending for next year. And currently, right now, they're actually looking at three-point-five to four percent as a possible recommendation to increase salaries for twenty-twenty-four, and that's where we started. Specifically also because we want to hold for twenty-twenty-four. So we're really looking at not freezing someone's salary for a year and a half, but to give them that what we consider a cost of living increase of three and a half percent.
So those.
That's three-and-a-half percent is retro basically to this year and not to next year. So our salary increases, and we're looking to hold everyone else. Does that mean that everyone else has a three-and-a-half percent kind of built into that?
Yes, everyone else, every other employee other than those thirteen has an increase above three-point-five.
Know what the average.
I do, I do.
And what the spread is, and we've all done the.
I have all of that. I have all of that. Yes, I sure do.
I do want to add, as part of our ongoing relationship with NFP, we work with them every year. Um, they look at the data and everything. They recommend to us what we should do as a pay increase per year instead of us sitting back trying to guess what would be good or not. That also helps us to keep from being behind, like we've gotten so far behind as well.
So the average, and I I want to remember, this is the average is twenty-seven percent pay increase for staff. Um, the reason that is so large is because some of our hardest to hire and our lowest-paid staff are seeing a significant pay increase. Um, one role category in particular that has long been underpaid because they have to be certified and have classes that we do not pay for. That role class of itself is seeing a fifty percent increase, and I am, that's what I thought. We knew this was very, very underpaid. Um, but even our lowest-paid, our custodial staff, our circulation staff, again, those were not at market rate. They were not competitive with the market. That's why we have a hard time and we lose people to fast food restaurants right now. And those are, again, a lot, I'm looking at them right now, are usually somewhere between twenty to forty percent. And that's the bulk of our staff, which is exactly why that average is so high.
Thanks.
Other questions?
So, just to be clear on your last paragraph, you you're recommending this implementation in July, that that will carry us through with no further raises until twenty-five.
Correct. Now, it will look like, and it it will obviously be an increase to the budget line of salaries for twenty-twenty-four than this year because we're increasing it this year.
Right.
But yes, there will be no additional salary increases in twenty-twenty-four budgeted.
So, should this be approved, how many staff members would we have that would not be at minimum? Would everybody?
Everyone will be at minimum or above.
Everybody.
Every single staff.
And there will be nobody above maximum?
So that's a great question. There's actually one, one employee who will, because their pay range actually decreased instead of increased, there's only one role that was affected in this way. And that one staff member will be just slightly over at one oh one point zero eight percent of their pay range.
And that's what NFP recommends doing, like a stipend for that.
Okay.
So they would just get a one-time stop stipend that would not build. So the only time that they would get any more of a basically increase is if we move the whole salary range. Yes.
Okay.
And just to understand your system, so you know, some of these are based on tenure. You know, so they're moving through minimum to maximum based on tenure. You know, there's a midpoint in there in in your model that they built, is there the equivalent of steps in there? I mean, is there, if I've been here for seven years, I'm going to land at about this spot?
Yes.
Nine, I'm going to land at about this spot, that there's some predictability to that?
Correct. Actually, NFP built that exact system for us. So based on your years, you increase in a percentage at a certain point um, throughout your range. And I do want you to know that while they said, you know, proficient, blah, 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 the average range penetration will be twenty-three percent. So most of the staff are not yet at that midpoint, and that's because the bulk of those staff, remember, their midpoint is actually the sixty-two point five. So most people will be above that minimum. There are very few staff members that will be right at the minimum.
Okay, so so my next line of questions are, you know, in the in the memo, it says that the the budget can withstand it, but what I have seen is what is a budget impact statement.
I got that for you right here. Um, this is all put together by Lori, knowing that Lori wasn't going to be here.
Correct.
So our original base salary budget, um, we without our cell stipends was six-point-five-nine-eight-nine-nine-one. Uh, what we are looking to increase that salary by in twenty-twenty-three is five-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand two-hundred-and-forty dollars.
What is that as a percentage of the whole budget?
Five point seven percent is what she has here.
So this proposal is going to impact our our personnel and salary budget.
It's going to increase at five point seven percent this year. It's a different number, obviously, next year when you're looking at the whole for an entire year, um, which I don't have. Yeah, I have it, I have it in mind. Um, so the reason that we can do this uh, in, so Lori wrote this out in the what, how, and why. Here's the how. With no anticipated cuts to ongoing operations and a reallocation of library operating fund appropriations, the current budget will cover the total increase for the second half, thirteen remaining pays. Why? When the twenty-twenty-three operating budget was drafted in July of last year, we were in the middle of the approval process for the twenty-twenty-two general obligation bond from McCullough. We were unsure what bonding opportunities, if any, would be available in this year as well as which of the remaining locations or projects would be prioritized. For that reason, we put money into some of those different categories in case we didn't bond for projects. Because we have now gotten both the McCullough bond and the ability to bond for these other renovations, we can reallocate those toward these line items. The twenty-twenty-four reasonably, if you'd like me to go on. Okay. With the retirement and the payoff of the twenty-thirteen leasing core bonds and the twenty-twenty-three GEO bond estimated repayment structuring, the debt service fund budget that Lori anticipates a decrease somewhere between one-point-two and one-point-five million from what we had thought before. Obviously, that depends on the overall growth. But that still remains uh, levy rate neutrality with that decrease. So the offset of the salary and benefits increase in the operating fund and the decrease in birth, we will still remain well under the anticipated growth quotient for twenty-twenty-four. In fact, when we really punched these numbers, we were like, oh, we have X amount more that we can actually grow the budget.
Right.
So she felt very good about it.
Yep.
And that was after some consultation with Baker Tilly again about the structuring of those bond payments and anticipated growth potions.
So I don't want any of my questions to sound like I'm anti-paying our staff with their work. But I also feel I have an obligation to ask questions from the taxpayers' perspective.
Sure.
So, like, I noticed that right now, if I read your notes right, that there are ten open full-time slots in the library right now.
Yes. I don't have that in front of me, but I did review it. So yes, there are.
So we have ten open positions. We approved this. Those ten open positions get hired. Is it safe to assume that all ten of those positions start at minimum? Or is there a negotiation in there with somebody based on? Or is there a negotiation in there with somebody based on prior experience or?
Yes, and so there are certain pay grades that will be negotiated, and that is why those basic and preferred those qualifications in the new role description allow for some negotiation within there to a point. You cannot negotiate up to the midpoint.
So, so I guess that's, that you're, you're driving at the question I have. What is a new person's ability to negotiate with a library for a position? How far can you negotiate past the minimum? You know.
Depends on the pay grade. So each pay grade is different based on the qualifications for a position. A base level position is going to have a smaller negotiation window than something that requires certification, schooling, um, advanced degrees, things like that.
But, but wouldn't all those items already be baked into the base salary structure anyways? As basic requirements for the position?
Yes, that is correct.
So why would that group have a different bargaining ability for moving through that slide?
It's just the.
So that was what I asked, but that's not what was the answer.
So again, each level, each role still has the basic and preferred. So the preferred is still there. It's just the dollar amount that may be negotiated.
But as a percentage, you know, I, I'm, I'm looking at this as. You've got each one of these, you've got a minimum of midpoint and a maximum, which represent the bottom and the top. Midpoint is somewhere a little north of the middle, really. Sixty two and a half or whatever they set it at. So I come in regardless of which one of these I come in at, you know, on this person. I'm at minimum. I shouldn't be able to get any further in this scale. Now, each of the scales are different based on the position. I get that the dollar value, but I shouldn't be able to get any further than the next guy because I happen to. I know somebody, you know, I hate to say that.
No, no, you're exactly correct. Yes.
Do the, in the job descriptions, those preferred skills, which are not required for that position, does, is that an attempt to take the subjectivity out of those kinds of decisions?
That's exactly right. Yes. If you meet the basic qualifications, uh, you're not going to have a negotiating as much as that preferred person. You come in with those preferred qualifications. It's going to set you, A, as a better candidate to hire regardless, and then B, as where you slot into the salary range. Yes.
Cause you certainly don't want someone to, in order to attract someone, you offer a larger salary. And then that person comes in maybe with less experience than somebody who's already here. You have a whole other problem. You, and I, I could see under the current structure, I mean, where actually chief operating officer is making more than CEO.
Technically, but that's never happened. But yeah.
Well, I'm making twice what I made last year in this position. So I've got a one hundred percent raise.
You hired a brand new director and you, because the board works with the HR department to set that. And you started a CEO at a minimum range, and I was already into the range that is technically possible. Yes. Yes, because generally your CEO, you're going to find someone with those preferred skills anyway, and then negotiate in, into a, a percentage higher in the range.
So if I come in, in a particular category and I acquire additional certifications, et cetera. Does my salary go up? Uh, am I in a position where I can negotiate that?
That is not our current HR practice. Mostly because there's not much wiggle room once you're in there. Your, your qualifications are the qualifications, and there's not much else for you to do. A librarian has to have a master's degree.
So if I'm in a, in a particular position and as I look at these, and I think, I think I can go and get something else. Then I can apply for those particular.
You're usually going to find a different position. Yes, that's exactly right.
And that's, that's a lot of the reason why we have openings so often because it's the domino effect. We have so much of the person moving from one to the other, which it opens us up. So that's a lot of this as well. Because people are looking to it means.
So essentially that's baked into the pay grade structure and the roles themselves. So if you start as what we will now be calling a library assistant. You could then move to an assistant librarian with additional certification and training. With an additional certification and training, you can move then from assistant librarian to librarian.
Okay, so what is tenure?
So tenure is just how long you've been in that position itself. So how many years you've held the role of.
Number that I've reached to, to get to tenure or?
Um, no, not, not in that respect.
Yeah, it's kind of looking at tenure different than say like a professor at university, right? Looking at number of years. General definition.
And I, and I want to go back and say that when we looked at this, it's not how long somebody has been at the library. It's how long they've been in their current.
Yes, yes. Lisa's a great example. She's been here thirty one, thirty one years. I wasn't going to say it, but you said it. Thirty one years. If we went just based on her time in the library, she would be probably maxed out in her salary range, but she's not been in her current position for thirty one years. She's moved up in the administration myself as well.
So, that raises a, so as I move through these bands, I go from a fourteen to an eighteen. My clock starts over as far as my salary.
We would look where you're currently.
We don't.
Does matter a little bit.
It does. Like we, we do not as a practice actually ever take people's money away. If you were at a fourteen and moved into an eighteen, but you were well within that salary range. We're never going to drop you down and take pay away just because that minimum.
No, I'm not advocating that, but I also want to make sure that I understood the statement that it's how long, how long you've been here, it's how long you've been doing what you're doing. Because I've always been under the impression that how long you've been here impacts things like vacation time and some of those other. They build regardless of where you're at. What if somebody went backwards?
If they go backwards voluntarily, then they would, their pay would go back into, if they're above where are the maximum would be, they would, they would have to go back. It was, and we have a situation, say that somebody's a librarian and they want to go, you know, they're tired of doing all that. They just want to be a navigator. Then, then yes, that's a lot the difference of a pay. We can't, we wouldn't keep them up there. They're not doing the work of that that's required of that.
And it's at their request.
So they go into it under, with that understanding.
Correct. Although the few times that that has happened, we've been lucky enough that their pay that they're currently at is still within that lower pay grade. And we don't actually decrease pay. I just want to make that clear because we have had that happen. And people have not lost pay because it's still, we're still able to.
They didn't lose pay, but their, their runway for greater pay was.
Yes, that's exactly right. Yes. Which is exactly why some of those people are in that three and a half percent.
So, uh, again, I'm going to ask again to make sure I heard you right. If we approve this as presented, there will be nobody left at the EVPL that is below this minimum number.
Correct.
Nobody.
Nobody, not a single person.
And there will be one that exceeds the maximum by a small number. And that we are not going to increase that beyond this where they're at today as far as the base pay.
So we did, so actually they're three and a half percent. We gave them a three and a half percent, and that's what took them over their maximum.
So that's where it would get that anything over.
Three and a half percent increase this time, and then it's.
I heard our consultants correctly, and I think this is bad. As opposed to a three and a half percent for that person, why would we not give them whatever percentage it takes to get to that maximum number? Lock their base pay in there and stop there. And then if we felt it was important to give them a one time stipend for that difference. So we have zero people above the max.
So we could do it that way.
Were based on all this on it. It seems to be, to be.
By the way, is over. Pay at this and give them a one time stipend of four hundred and eighty one dollars.
Because I would like the ability to say that we listened to our consultant and we took them. If I understand what you said earlier, if I understand it correctly, which is always up for grabs. That, uh, they're anticipating the increase for next year to be roughly three and a half. So then that person would actually not get the increase that is anticipated in all of this package for everyone next year. And here's the way I understand. Is everybody's going to get a raise in June. Uh, and then that raise includes your raise for twenty twenty four. And the raise for twenty twenty four is three and a half percent. So this person would actually get two and whatever, two point what percent? And not get the whole three and a half for next year, if I understand that correctly.
Well, they get the four hundred and eighty one dollars. As a lump sum to make that three and a half percent whole.
But that would be in, in twenty twenty three, right? And so in twenty twenty four, I, I guess you do it as another stipend. But in the end, then it, to me, that doesn't matter because we're coming back in twenty twenty five. And what base figure, four hundred and eighty one dollars, it's not going to.
So the reason we did do it this way was because it only affected one person. And as an equitable across the board to be as equitable as possible, we felt that one person at just that minor point was okay. We did talk to NFP about that, just so you know.
And it goes back to as, as well as about not doing anything in twenty twenty four. So that comes into play. Yes.
And we're not aware where that, where that, uh, position is in the whole scheme of things. Very low, we could talk.
I do want to point that out because this role was one, there were not very many roles that when we actually looked across industries that roles, that salary ranges decreased.
And this person's been in this position for a.
For a very long time. It put them so high into the, the current range. So the range itself fell. And yet this person is a longtime employee. And that's what put us here.
So, we've got these ranges, and they're built on twenty twenty three dollars. Twenty twenty two dollars, whatever their survey was. What is, what is the, so next year, we, we effectively give our, in twenty twenty five, we give a three and a half percent raise. Assuming that doesn't push anybody out of, what do these numbers look like in twenty twenty five? Does this number stay the same until we have these folks redo it and reevaluate it? Or is there a COLA, is there a COLA max mechanism that automatically said that in twenty twenty five? These are going to shift. But a, let's say the number's three percent in twenty twenty five. Three percent on this number looks a lot different than three percent on that sample. And so that's when things start to skew again.
So that is where we consult with NFP, and they have that ongoing annual conversation with us about what they're seeing and where ours are and where they are in with the market as a whole. And that's kind of that ongoing piece of touch point that they do. But you're exactly right. It could be done either way. There will be no set decision at this point because every year we would come to you and have that discussion with you when we budget for the next year.
Yeah, whether it's a straight, straight raise or whether it's a.
And where we have that conversation with them, and that's where she kind of said about three years is about the average that this would be where it's at, and then we would look at it again.
So our hope is that you're just moving in, into deeper into your range because most people are below the midpoint. We're just moving people for the next, I'm guessing, three years, right? Then we look at moving our entire range.
Which is one of the sticking points of why we have so many positions that are not filled. Because of the salary.
We want to make sure that we incrementally up our scale at a rate that we can afford to do it without getting behind like we have been now.
Be the one who keeps getting confused, but to Eric's point. My understanding was you, you're kind of setting everyone at a salary now or an hourly rate. If we, if in twenty twenty five there's a COLA, wouldn't that be on what you set me now? But versus going back to the range and relooking at everything for me like we just did. You would just do two and a half percent on what you set. But, but at some point, these ranges are going to.
Correct. Also true, which is, which is past.
Yeah, this past year, what we're currently in, we did it, we did an increase to our scale as well. So we've been increasing our scale, which is slightly, but when you only do a two percent increase to your scale, it's not that much. So that's where we go back to look at them to keep us where we need to be to keep that minimum. Moving where it needs to, yes.
Well, I mean, I'm an advocate of the idea that, that we don't move the scale unless it's part of a structured assessment. That looks at it at the market level to make sure that, because you can move it three percent and then. Don't make sense anymore. We could move it with the Federal Reserve. Okay, so there is a motion on the floor, and it has been seconded to approve the recommendation as presented. Are there any additional questions or discussion items? Does everybody feel like they know enough to vote? Hearing no additional questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Well done. And, 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 and the other thing I would say, hopefully, this now sets us in motion that we don't end up where we were before, that we have an evergreen process to make sure that our team members or our staff are being paid a commensurate ra- amount for the jobs they're doing. Based on the community we live in.
Thank you all so much.
All right. Finance report. Um, I guess I need to appoint an interim or a pro temp or a something treasurer. So, Alenda, you're it.
But I am not going to do the finance report, but I will be happy to address. Approval bills. Do you want to move ahead to that or do we?
Yes, because honestly, the, the finance report is honestly a report. It's informational unless you have questions. If you have questions, we can have Lori answer for you next month or.
We can attempt.
And we also have Nicole here as well that can answer them too.
So let's go, we'll skip A and B, we'll go to C.
All right, so dated May eleventh, twenty twenty three. Um, we have total invoices of four hundred thousand, six hundred and ninety three dollars and twenty eight cents. Payroll dated April seventh, twenty twenty three, uh, two hundred and sixty six thousand, six hundred and eighty eight dollars and fifty nine cents, and payroll dated April twenty first, twenty twenty three, a four hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty eight cents. This is in the form of a motion.
Second. There's motion in a second. All of the favors signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Other business, Rick?
Yeah, so I have the foundation liaison report. Uh, we met, uh, on April nineteenth, twenty twenty three. Uh, we approved our minutes, uh, an investment, uh, changes, uh, report. Uh, Lori Tomlin gave the financial report, and I just wanted to give a brief overview of that. Uh, that with, uh, some of the Charles Swab investment account raising by, I think it was for, you know, a little bit over forty seven thousand. That brought total, uh, current assets of the foundation to nine hundred and thirty two thousand, seventy nine dollars and twelve cents. Scott, uh, gave an update on, uh, many of the projects that this board has heard many things about, uh, including, uh, what's happening at McCullough. And the, uh, overall progress of, uh, bonding. Uh, we had some old business in which we discussed the twenty twenty three Friends Committee book sales. March book sale financials and August book sale update. And then a brief update on the foundation task force for, uh, uh, just reviewing everything, uh, as far as, um, the overall structure and work of the, uh, EVPL Foundation.
Any questions for Rick? Do we need to approve that or is that just information?
It's just information.
So, um, you and I were corresponding a little bit this morning about adopting the tree.
Yeah.
So, how, how would we structure that? Can this board over to you to make the request officially?
I think we could ask Steve, but yeah, I think the board could ask me to go to the, uh, as far as being the liaison to the foundation, a member of the Library Foundation Board, we were discussing the ash border issue. We had brought it up before as far as, uh, EVPL possibly adopting some of those trees in order to help, uh, the, uh, the city arborist, uh, fight against the ash border problem. There are ash trees on West, uh,
Yeah.
property. Uh, and we thought perhaps this board could give me the direction to go to that board and ask that board to adopt those ash trees.
Said Dr. Seuss. Could you say that real quickly?
I will not eat it on a tree. I will not eat it.
I do not like green eggs. So do you think that is, um, reasonable for this board to, to send Rick with the message on behalf of this board, asking the foundation to officially adopt those trees on the property there so that they can help with their care and maintenance?
Yeah. So just.
Do you hear a motion?
Sound moved.
There's a motion, second, a second. Oh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries.
Okay. I'll do it.
Thank you. Announcements.
Katie.
I see your pen.
You should gain a screen.
And announcements. Okay, while Katie is getting set up, I'm gonna briefly go through this while she's getting ready. Um, I just wanted to again, thank the staff for all their hard work, um, on the salary surveys, specifically Lisa, um, Lori, and of course Heather, um, doing the heavy lifting on this. They kept me in the loop the whole time they were doing it. But again, just to remind everyone, our staff is our most important asset and truly this is a huge thing for them and a long time coming. So we really do appreciate the board's support in doing this, um, and on the staff, um, staff development day was this past week on Monday. It was a great success and everyone went through all sorts of instruction. We had a great, um, um, speaker on diversity from BSC. She was wonderful. Everyone had a great program there. Um, she was very, very good and we appreciate that partnership and her being able to come over and speak to us because it really did mean a lot to our staff as well. Um, summer reading is also kicking off. And first, I'm gonna thank Heather and the marketing team for giving you some handouts to help market that. And now I just wanted to turn it over to Katie Reinicki to, um, discuss our partnership with Deaconess and University of Southern Indiana um, on, um, telehealth.
Since you mentioned it, I just wanna go over what we left here for you, your goodies that you're taking home. Uh, obviously our May monthly programming guide is in there. You have five different bookmarks. Uh, several of them are our Asian Pacific American Heritage Month bookmarks and you have a preview of the Our Summer bookmark with the book list on the back of it. You have a magnet for our summer that Faith, our graphic designer extraordinaire, uh, has created. And additionally, as part of the summer package, so to speak, uh, and around, yeah, you do have a temporary tattoo. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. So. Yeah, I, I mean, there you go. You're gonna stick around for a little bit. Yeah, don't, don't do that. Uh, your neck would be great place though, I think, yeah. Uh, then the eight stickers. You have eight stickers, one for each location, going along with the theme of begin your journey. We're really looking at the locations and journey even from each location and Faith came up with some great designs for those as well. So you have the full package.
She's like my camper.
Yeah, yes, exactly. That's exactly what they are. Uh, stay tuned. Next month you will get, uh, overviews and the logs for each one. They are phenomenal. They're really fun and it really is a journey this summer. So we're really excited about it and Faith did a great job. Now you can talk.
Now me? Okay. That, this is a hot mic. I apologize. So, um, as you have probably heard, we've entered into a partnership with USI and Deaconess. And the overall mission of this partnership is to provide more opportunities for residents to have safe spaces, uh, to have their telehealth appointments with their healthcare providers. Um, Deaconess, uh, and USI recognize that there were several, uh, instances of patients not, um, basically not scheduling their appointments, uh, for the telehealth. And it may have been because they don't have a safe space. They may not have reliable internet. A lot of these people are in, are, are rural areas. And so they just weren't making the appointments. So this is an effort to, uh, increase those, um, appointments being scheduled and people getting the necessary need, care that they need. Uh, the target, um, appointments are the annual wellness checks that, uh, people on Medicare get and mental wellness appointments. So those are the specific target, uh, areas. And the, uh, age, target age is sixty-five and O older. However, you don't have to be sixty-five and over two, um, to utilize this service. That is just where, uh, the target population is and where, um, our partners have recognized the greatest need. So, um, this is truly an excellent coming together of a need and an opportunity because the library for some time now has been recognized as a place where we have reliable internet, we have trusted technologies, and we have staff that daily, daily help people with technology assistance. Many times those older residents that, um, that are needing to schedule these appointments. So, um, we, then this is also not a new concept. There are some other libraries who are already taking advantage of this service and there are some, uh, there's a coalition out of North Carolina, uh, who has reached out and has said, you know, we wanna standardize this process and we're looking to you guys to help us decide that. So there is some, there's some internet or not international, but national attention on what we're doing here. So, uh, without further ado, this is the mobile cart that each of the four locations will have. And they are equipped with a laptop that is touch, touchscreen. There is also a headset. Uh, we tested out all of the four spaces and we recognized that, you know, some of these people may be hearing impaired. They may n- need assistance for, uh, hearing or, um, or for the doctor to hear them. Uh, some of the, some of the echo in the space could be difficult. So we have a headset that's very nice. It's got its own little microphone and it has adjustments on the side as well. Additionally, we have speakers just in case. We don't see these being used much, but we, we have them just in case. And then, uh, finally a telephone. And this is targeted specifically for those who may need language assistance, language translation, so they can pick up the phone and call and get a translator on the line. Let's see, I think I got all of, oh, and finally a mouse. For those who don't like using touchpads. Um, I will say that we did not put any money into this, uh, the GUEP grant, which, uh, USI, um, is over. Purchased all of the materials. So it was nothing out of pocket for us. And, um, I think I've mostly covered everything, but there's so much. Oh, this is a pilot. So it will start May fifteenth. It will go to December thirty-first. During that time, there will be limit, limited times at the four locations. It's Central, North Park, Oakland and Red Bank. And during this time, the staff will collect information about the, you know, the successes, what might be working, what might not be working. Um, so we can make any unnecessary adjustments. Also there's, you know, the information we collect will also tell, um, you know, whether at the end of the period, we should continue the process. We should, could maybe expand it or discontinue it. That's why we're collecting that data. But further, we're collecting it for our partners to see whether that target population is actually utilizing the service. So we will collect some information, but no personal health information, nothing like that. The only thing we'll be collecting is their name and date of birth. I think I covered the highlights. Yes.
I just wonder about confidentiality. Are, if, do you anticipate that the individual that would be doing this would use like a meeting room or a smaller confidential space to be able to?
So we have designated study rooms at the four locations will spec, that will specifically be, um, for those purposes. And additionally, the headphones will be a greater, um, uh, a privacy end because anyone who's walking by, if they happen to overhear, they won't be able to hear anything from the doctor. They might overhear if a patron's being, you know, particularly vocal, they might overhear something, but we've tested it out. Like I said, we went to all locations, we went through the whole process. And we didn't have any issues with that. But we do, we are making it very clear in the literature that we're promoting that we cannot guarantee one hundred percent privacy. So they know that going in.
Can you, can you tell them, how are people going to be connected to this? In other words, the, the ones that have a tendency to not do wellness checks, those types of things.
Yes.
How are they going to be informed and how are they going to be brought into the various locations to make that happen? Because part of it is that they simply are not aware.
Right.
The other part is they don't have the transportation or whatever is necessary to get here for those types of things.
Yes. So I'll speak to the promotion of that. It will be, uh, the, the main promotion will be on the end of the healthcare provider through the Deaconess healthcare providers who do offer the telehealth appointments. You know, they'll say, we're doing a telehealth appointment also. You can go to the library and set up an appointment to use one of their spaces and their supplies to do this. And also we will be putting up, um, signage at all of our locations. Uh, we were, uh, just at the press demo yesterday and we had a patron who was overhearing us talking and they said, oh my goodness, I'm gonna be using this. They're, they're disabled. They, they require, um, assistance getting to and from places, but coming to the library is a priority for them. And so this is just a perfect opportunity again of the need being met with the opportunity. Um, but additionally, we are going to be, um, reaching out to a lot of our community partners like Swerka and.
And your churches.
Yes, and, and we're open to.
My church has an older population, I'm thinking. Okay, if we can put this on our bulletin so that they are aware.
Mm-hmm.
Those types of things. Because oftentimes the services, the resources are available is just not connecting to the people who actually need it.
Exactly.
They create posters. Did we also do brochures as well, overviewing?
Not yet.
During the work.
Okay, so there you go.
Okay.
Our marketing is creating flyers and posters to hand out. And if there are any organizations that you think would be particularly, um, benef, you know, would benefit from those, just let us know.
Excellent idea.
So I wanna build on this real quick. So that takes care of this pilot. Um, but obviously during COVID, we've seen an increase of Zoom meetings and all of these different things that people utilize um, an online visit for. And one of the things that we are actually looking at with the renovation of McCullough, which then of course could impact how we renovate other spaces, is including a very small room, much like our study rooms, but that is soundproof specifically for online sessions and things of this nature. Uh, so that's one of the things that we're already including in those plans at McCullough. So you could use it for telehealth. We know a lot of people do actually prison visits or their family visits or just a meeting where you want a space that isn't like our regular meeting rooms that is more soundproof. And so this is starting something that I think you'll see as a trend in all of our library locations integrators' capacity.
Thank you. I, I do have one question. And this is just coming from COVID. Who cleans that after every use?
So, uh, the staff has been instructed, they have, um, cleaning wipes, sanitizing wipes. They will wipe down the mi, um, supplies after every use.
Okay.
Yeah, we try and do with.
Game and orb, so.
Yep. Well, I just have them available even before the people even start to use them. I'm think, and I'm thinking if, my mother is ninety-two, who has problems with hearing. Uh, I'm assuming if I went to a certain library where this was available, I could go in with her because she's not technologically inclined. Neither am I, but we, we would work through that. But I'm thinking of that particular age group where, you know, it would come in very, very handy, where they don't have the capacity maybe to walk long distances into a doctor's office that's safer.
Right. And we are, um, communicating with our staff, you know, where the line is between how far they can assist and at what point they need to step out. Once they are logged in, the staff member leaves and closes the door.
Nice, nice.
Yep. And while we're talking about partnerships like that, I also wanted to remind you all, we do have the legal kiosks that we're partnering with the Indiana Bar Association. Um, with one of those legal kiosks coming to Central. See, the other one, West, we did confirm it was West.
Correct.
Yep. And those will be coming soon too. So, and then again, that's no cost to us. It's just we're providing basically an internet port forum so they can, um, access legal information, um, free of charge through the Indiana Bar Association.
Housing related.
Yeah, housing related to start, but there's supposed to be more coming. Uh, hopefully if this pilot with the bar association takes off.
Okay.
Yeah, we're one of the few libraries in Indiana doing this.
One last question though. With your collection of data, so granted this, I mean, I'm all for it. I think it's a great use of ability. Are we gonna track our soft costs related to employee time spent working with that?
We certainly can. We haven't factored that in yet, but.
Part of the study to know how much time our staff is devoted to helping and assisting. Cause I think that would be an important number if you're gonna continue with the pilot.
Certainly. We are, um, recommending that the staff, whenever they reserve the, uh, meeting room for this, that they account of, give a, at least half an hour of preparation for setting it up and then tearing it down afterwards. So we can look at that and, uh, we're also asking staff to fill out a form after the event so that they can, um, share with us any issues. And in that it says, did the appointment go beyond the anticipated time? And so we can go ahead and start getting that information, but I can adjust the form to say, you know, how much time.
I'm not looking for a science fair project, but, I mean, I think, I think a pretty close number of, you know, we spent, our EDPL staff spent four hundred hours in the course of made of whatever, working on that project or helping clients.
Yeah, sure.
Any other announcements? Good to the cause kinda stuff? Hearing none, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.